Do you have any visitor comments this evening?
Is there a comment that has been related to the book, anything on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Rosia Simone, um, I was, I saw on the agenda tonight that there's under committee reports something for the calendar. Um, and I saw that you did not approve the proposed calendar in regards to the budget reductions that were made last month. So I would like to propose to the board to take into consideration, um, the student day that needs to be eliminated from the calendar, that instead of just taking it from the last day of school in June, that you consider possibly taking the day from either the winter, the holiday break at Christmas, wrapping it into the February vacation or the April vacation, one of those days as a student day instead of the last day of the school year. And just for transparency purposes, I will state for the record that I do work with board education and any decision that you make in regards to my proposal would have an effect on my pay, but I am entirely okay with that.
Anything else? We do not have the student representatives with us any longer. Tom, do you, have you, have we appointed new student reps yet?
We have not. We usually do that at the onset of the school year with the recommendation from the faculty advisor from the student council.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Did you approve of the previous minutes, May 19th Board of Education meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 19th, 2016 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Me texting, I wasn't here.
Hmm?
Said me texting, I wasn't here.
Any other personnel?
Uh, before we begin this evening, we'd like to start with the recognition of our volunteers that are here with us this evening. We do have the opportunity to recognize their outstanding dedicated service to the children of North Grandford. Well, we've been blessed to work with them over the years. And, uh, the local principals I know would like to say a few words, so that being said, I'm going to ask Mr. Allen Davis from MBIS to please come forward to recognize the award that Mr. Burden acted for many years and lives sometimes. Mr. Davis?
No, we haven't. It's, uh, very fortunate for North Grandford that Roberta made the decision to teach and ultimately chose education as a career that supplemented her career as a respiratory therapist. After graduating from Warhart High School, Roberta attended Sacred Heart University, but she didn't stay there. She left to pursue, uh, she started off pursuing a degree in literature, but she didn't stay at Sacred Heart. She left and transferred to Bridgeport Hospital School of Respiratory Therapy to become certified respiratory therapist. There were only 12 students in the program, and one of them was her, to be future husband, Tim, who's here this evening, sitting in that room. And, uh, Tim is quoted as saying meeting Roberta was a breathtaking experience. Quitting that and someone sending us a raise.
That's Mr. Davis.
I was gonna say, I'm convinced that you said that, but I know Alan would work that out.
During, during their time at Bridgeport Hospital, Roberta and Tim were married, that was in 1977. And actually they're celebrating the 39th wedding anniversary of this family, so. So they relocated to Southern California, and Roberta enrolled at Orange Coast College to become a registered respiratory therapist. They were there for three years and before moving to Maine, Roberta and Tim worked as respiratory therapists at Southern Maine Medical Center, where, uh, and they, they both worked on the same shift quite often, and they were referred to as a Mac-Tac. Roberta continued schooling at University of Lincoln and received a bachelor's in education for its age rate. While in Maine, the Max two children were born. Jessica first in 1984, Danny followed in 1985. And Jessica, uh, who's not here tonight, she's getting ready for her wedding this week, but Jessica is a, is a registered nurse and a nurse in the St. Rayfield's. Her fiancee enrolled at Bank Street College in Manhattan, where he studied to become a elementary teacher. Roberta's son Danny is lieutenant in the United States Air Force and is currently stationed as a pilot in Los Angeles. Roberta, as I said, had always wanted to teach, but she was conflicted due to the job market at the time. Plus she wanted to move the race of children. So consequently, she worked at various part-time jobs while the children were young and growing up. In 1994, the Max moved to their present location in Hamden. Tim joined Yale University as a respiratory, uh, Yale, sorry, Yale Medical Hospital as a respiratory therapist. And Roberta worked part-time as respiratory therapist at various nursing homes and also at the Hospital for Special Care in New Britain. Roberta obtained her Connecticut teaching certification in general science, seven twelve, from Southern. And during this time, she also had part-time jobs at Silver Learning Center. She actually substitute taught in Walliford, and she continued her part-time respiratory work. In 1998, Roberta obtained a permanent subposition at Dan Camerewell Middle School in Walliford. And was there for four months before she took a one-year grade six opening at MBIS. Now that was only a one-year position. At the end of that year, she then transferred to Hamden Middle School, where she took another one-year only position teaching grade seven math and science. A full, a full-time science position opened in North Grandford. Roberta applied. She returned to MBIS and has been with us ever since, 18 consecutive years. Roberta's master's degree is in science education from Southern, and she also has a six-year degree from the University of New England. Roberta is very proud of her work during time in MBIS, in particular, starting our recycling club. Had been our recycling club advisor for 10 years. And also she's very proud of a butterfly, beautiful butterfly garden that used to exist in the old building, uh, in back of the arbor. She's certainly very, very proud of that. She survived her time through the renovation process in 2008, and she and her sixth grade colleagues spent a little over a year in the portable classrooms. And this, the, and this was, for those that don't remember this part, uh, they, they actually had a whole island up by, well, closer to the, are totally detached from the building and had to, um, come through from the, the student, had to pass from the portables to the classrooms in the main part of the building, uh, walking outdoors. They actually had a covered path during part of that time. So I remember when the teachers first moved out there, I sent them an email. I said, uh, please let me know. Obviously, uh, we want you set up, got your portable classrooms, ready to go. Let me know if any paper, pencils, supplies, send me an email. So I had a little email to all the teachers asking for various emails at the opening day, seeing charts and so on. Roberta's message I'll never forget, Alan can give me a window. So, I checked into that, and, uh, it was the only portable classroom that did not have a window. So went into the, uh, construction meeting we met earlier week and brought this up, not thinking they would be able to comply. We actually installed a window in Roberta's room. So that went back pretty well. She, she, throughout her career, she often stayed very, very late in the building. It was often when she was in the portals, would be out there with pitch dark. And so by default, she was a part of our, Roberta first security team. She didn't have it by herself. And one night, she even confronted a person who had climbed through one of the windows. And, uh, this person was a parent who said his daughter had left her dancing clothes on the table. So Roberta took care of that. And, uh, that was, that was certainly Roberta's, uh, experience. So, and Roberta also, part of playing the fame is she was one of the first staff members to be on half duties. Like I said, they had, students had to get from the portable classrooms to the main building. So first day that we opened this pathway, we had a driving rainstorm. It was horrendous, you know, horizontal rain. And, uh, and I remember at the end of the day, Roberta was just totally splattered with mud, you know, and the students going back and forth. And, uh, most of her colleagues, the same thing, and students. And in no way was there a complaint, none of the parent phone call, none of the students complaining. Certainly Roberta, although she told me after she brought lots of changes in clothes, when she had to backdoody, she did, she did a wonderful job. I also say that, um, one of the, and I won't ask her to do this tonight, but one of the things that she does at the end of the year, it's still hard to believe, but this really is true, is that she does a split for her students on the last day of school. And this is a tradition that she actually began year one.
No.
Not year one?
No, he figured it was, yeah, around 98, 99.
Okay. So even this year, thankfully she didn't get hurt. She does a split for her, uh, for classes.
You may, you may have to pick up that, uh...
Yeah, I don't know. So I know Roberta has great experience about retirement. She will greatly miss her students and continue to surprise her every day. She'll be a member, is a very caring teacher and certainly a team player, who always did her best, and most importantly, with a positive attitude. And Roberta and Tim are looking forward to their daughter Jessica's wedding, which is next week. And, um, time for traveling, gardening, hiking, cooking, biking, and maybe a return to part-time work as respiratory therapist. Wherever her path may lead, I'm a fan of the mission of half duties. For Roberta, she has made a positive difference for hundreds of members of students during her 18 years at MBIS. I wish Roberta, Tim, and her family and their family good health and much happiness in the future. And I thank her for 18 years of dedicated service.
And we have a proclamation like the... Proclamation is presented in grateful appreciation, grateful appreciation to Roberta Mac by the North Grandford Board of Education on behalf of the entire school community as a testimony to your contributions to our community. Whereas during the 17 years of service to the North Grandford Public Schools, has built a reputation as a caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate employee. Whereas an employee of the North Grandford Public Schools for the past 17 years, Roberta Mac has served as an educator, positively impacting the lives of the children of the town in North Grandford. Now therefore, the North Grandford Board of Ed on behalf of the grateful residents of this community do hereby tender to Roberta Mac proclamation extending to her our deep appreciation, appreciation for her distinguished service and our best wishes for you to be good health and happiness in the future. Roberta, thank you so much. It's been an honor in my seven and a half years to work with you. And I wish you and your family nothing but the best for your upcoming wedding and your grandchildren and many years of health and happiness.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could just, if you would, just walk in. Roberta, we're gonna have to come back up for a photograph. We have our staff talking here with Alan coming up as well. And then, if you're not posted, you're on the website.
No.
Okay, Mr. Stepford, would you please come forward?
Sure. Uh, many of the rooms have either worked with Professor Washberg or actually with Susan Davis or colleagues or that number of years has been in the district, 37 plus years on behalf of the entire school. We want to thank him for his dedicated service. And please accept my apologies, Dr. Davis is a very tough actor to follow. So I'm gonna do my best, please provide us with a segue in that, um, to Roberta's classrooms. One of the things that Alan had shared at the end of the school year was, um, he was very impressed with my detective school skills as an assistant principal early on, because as one of these, um, reports came in, he had come to me and his car was dented from front to back. He was a family man. Kids were younger at that time. He had a family man that thing was dented from the front to the back. And he thought a good student had done this or some, you were off of Route 80. And the investigation led us to that it was a temporary classroom that was on a trailer. And, uh, I, I assured him, and I had forgotten this story, but I assured him early on that we were gonna take care of it. And I called on, and the insurance company from the school district had made things right, or the construction company at that point in time. So, um, I guess the two of you will be connected by the, by the classrooms and the window and the dent in the car. So, um, he's got a phenomenal memory. Everyone knows that, uh, he is longtime general science teacher at the high school. He's also taught astronomy courses and has that passion. They learned most recently at an event with our staff that he's also very skilled in playing the acoustic guitar and now the ukulele. Um, so while he, um, had done that, he had an open case, and I went up and replaced the dollar bill. It's the dump, and he says, I'm now smiling because I'm now retired and we all did it to these. So, um, I know that he's very much looking forward to retirement, but I also know, um, after hearing him speak with our staff and thank him, and especially their assistants, as I rely on them in the area of technology, um, that he's very much looking forward to retirement, but he's gonna miss a lot of us at, um, at the high school. So thank you again for your dedicated service, your sense of humor, all of your interests, and the best of luck to you and your family with the new pizza business, which we truly, we will miss you, but we know that you're moving on and, uh, enjoy Maine next week. And we hope a trip is safe.
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks for the smart board, Ellen.
See you later.
Your alumni are coming back. Oh, so my first trouble when my smart board was solved by this fine young man right over here. I'm standing in front of you going, I, I don't know what to do. And he says, I saw you, it was all set.
Dallas, it's an honor to present this to you, proclamation for your 38 years of service to the North Grandford students that you've worked with. Due to math, an average of 100 to 125 students each year on your case load, times 38 years, you will impact thousands of children. And they've become a passion and love for science from you. So I want personally to thank you, uh, and honor to work with you. I always enjoy your humor, my hype. I won't do that like the other last one I had at the hall. We are certainly in a machine, but we look forward to following your happiness with your grandchildren for many years to come. And we'll do our best to you, nothing but good health. So thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
And if you need to get pictures, sure, and then we'll do a walk again. No jokes, I'm not.
One, two, three. Thank you.
I know all the parts in this now. I had him in the dark. So many times, but so many, many students. Now you are, you are free to leave. You do not have to stay. I'm gonna help you out on this one. But take food on the way out, please, we have plenty of food. Thanks for being here.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I just would like to publicly thank Mr. Carnold for his seven years of dedicated service. He is relocating, uh, to Rhode Island with his family. He'll be teaching at Rhode Island, providing, uh, line in Canada, killing the high school, so he's not going to, uh, to, uh, to move. And we wish him nothing but the best. If you can look back over seven years of the calling of our programs and all the remarks also related to his dedication, these more students is loved and professional. Any questions, don't remember this.
The superintendents recommends the appointment of Mr. Matthew Turturro, the position of North Grandford Special Education teacher effective at the beginning of the 2016, 2017 school year. To be placed on Master Step One in accordance with the contract with the Federation of Teachers and North Grandford Board of Education. Richard Turturro was hired in January on a one-year contract, and we are fortunate to be able to retain him.
If I could just make a comment, this is technically eligible for executive session if you wanted to do that before making the appointment, but you may not feel that's necessary.
I don't believe Roberta needs to say this.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Matthew Turturro to the position of North Grandford Special Education teacher effective at the beginning of the 2016 and 2017 school year, to be placed on Master Step One in accordance with the contract with the Federation of Teachers and North Grandford Board of Education. No second.
Any second, do we have? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Question carries. As was mentioned, Mr. Turturro, uh, in January to our register program. He was working in, in Matt's, and at the time, uh, as a long-term substitute. He became highly recommended and made an immediate impact in the register program, uh, working with our students, making connections with our students. And I know the high school district team was so impressed in a short period of time, where they actually, uh, asked him to be a coach in the spring because of his connections with students and his ability. So I know moving forward, uh, he is looking to do some coaching. I believe he's gonna be our tennis coach. Correct. He's gonna be our tennis coach next year, so he's already getting involved outside of the classroom. So thank you for...
Endorsing the government recognition. I don't see Lynn Reardon here, should you hear something?
Uh, no, Lynn is not POCB. We've already done the district retirees, so moving to donations. We do have a donation that you'll have to approve, totaling $2,415 for opportunities for scholarships to attend the North Grandford Summer Camp each year. This year, he has a donation to students who are reading at the local center camp. This is similar to what we've done last.
I'll make a motion to accept the generous donation in the amount of $2,415 from Matt's Mission Fund to provide opportunities to North Grandford students to attend the 2016 Summer Camp program.
And I would like to, um, just say in the discussion before we vote, that, um, I think this is a wonderful thing that Matt's Mission is doing. It's so difficult to find money for the children that really benefit from going to camp and paying for it. And, um, you know, for years when North Grandford and North Haven were running the camp together, we struggled with how to get funding for these children. So, you know, I, I personally want to thank the carriers.
She's done this for a number of years.
Thank you, carriers.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Question carries. Nothing filters, no communications? Healthy food certification?
If we could, uh, move to the MedSec report, so maybe gather and handout for the healthy food certification, and then come back to that.
Okay.
Attached, you'll find a copy of the MedSec report. If you look there, there was a study that was done in cooperation with Mr. Stepford. Seven months ago, what they went through and did an audit of the building facility. And I don't think there's any major surprises in the report if you look at their recommendations for 21% learning and some of the things that would need to be done to accomplish the environment, the environment, uh, to make that happen. So if you have any questions, if you had a chance to go through and look at, um, the report. Mr. Stepford, Professor Watts, can you answer any questions about the visit?
Yeah, I just have a question about, um, I think, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't seem to mention about the library media center. And I'm, I think library media centers are a part of the school. And I'm just hoping that when we do move forward, chance for our renovated as new high school or, or whatever we end up with, um, we do this, that we give serious consideration to that library media center.
Absolutely. We, we renovated it seven years ago. It was, it was grossly outdated, green carpet. Connectivity for the internet was limited. There was no cable. The test collection was limited. We've done a great job of, of sprucing it up and getting into a hub for our school. As I've mentioned many times, my goal would be to move the library into the courtyard, if it was feasible, and have all four wings surrounding it in the diamond, and move the science wing into the existing library. So your content would be together and all of your classrooms would be into that library.
Well, I personally would certainly support that. In fact, I, I believe that would dawn the vision of library media center being a part of the school. And I can't think, we can discuss this further later on, but I just think it's just so important. I, I might be neglecting it.
Sure. And I think had you not, um, put the new flooring in and put the HVAC in this in the library, it would have been a lot more attention. I think a lot of the bulk of this is on existing bathrooms.
Yes.
The science room, the things that are outdated and need to be updated. But certainly, looking at MBIS and renovating, the only part of the building that remained was the sixth grade wing. So obviously, we've got to a point in renovating that high school. We have a million-plus-dollar roof for one section, another million-dollar piece that was added. We'd stay within that existing footprint, but certainly have the ability for new space in that boardroom. And it just naturally makes sense with that being a part of the English, the foreign languages, social studies to be surrounding that, and then have the science wing move off of the library. And we have, obviously, questions that were also science. So that's the vision, and I know there's conversations with the long-range planning committee looking at, uh, you know, the possibility of, obviously, the police station and the high schools, seniority of the hot, right, for now.
And I would also allow you to move to nurses' office.
Everything out to the front. My, my vision would be to put the front entranceway next to the auditorium so that MBIS, the auditorium, and the high school would all have entry points in the front of the building. We would, um, circumvent parking areas that have a universal drop lock. Move the administrative wing, the nursing wing, the guidance wing, out of the backside of the high school into that front part. So when you came into the building, it would be all support services.
And, and then the only other comment I'll make is if we could, and we may not be able to, but if there were an outside area that was protected, that students could congregate during lunch or other, other times, and we would know they were protected from outside, you know, password wise, et cetera, that, that would be something to think about too.
Sure.
But I don't know if we're gonna have a room there.
Well, yeah, then that was the part, yeah, and that's the, the important conversation when you look at, you know, with the greenhouse is now right next to the cafeteria. If there was a way for us to gain some of that tech area space in the back, move the dumpsters out of there and enclose that area so the kids can come in and out of the cafeteria and have the greenhouse right there.
Maybe have some tables and things. Yeah.
Right, so, if, if any questions on the study?
No, I don't think there's any.
The study, I don't think that study showed us anything that we didn't know.
No, I know.
Particularly what was, what was in there was highlighted on the tour we took last spring.
So I just like to thank Mr. Stepford. I know I was in the district one, and that was in the building. It's time resuming for the administration. Before I worked there, I don't know if this was handled in the same fashion. So if it was, I just wanted to thank you for this time and I really appreciate it.
was, I just wanted to thank you first, and then I'll read the rest of this team.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Phil Chody and Don, who also provide us information on the facility historical piece, because the questions that I cannot answer electronically through email are during the visit. We have contacted Don's office and Bill Chody. Bill actually did part of the tour with us in different areas of the building.
Well, thank you.
The window shots that you see on page 12 were actually captured out into the library. So the library did get, you know, the tour, if you will, in those windows, were some of the ones that are in the toughest shape that are located currently in the library.
All of the windows in the building, these are obviously many years old, and we're literally pumping thousands and thousands of dollars in heat out the window every heating season. And the way that the building is set right now, with the heating system having to function and heat the diamond, there's no heat in the hallways of the diamond. So the challenge is, the teachers are instructed to teach with their doors shut for safety and superior reasons. What you're doing is you're trapping your heat in your classroom, you're losing it through inefficient windows, and then when you open the door, the hallways are cold. If you left your doors open over time, the hallways would heat, and it would be a different, like, the safety piece is a precedent. The hallways.
Though that, having taught in the other series of the Diamond Amendment of yours, that probably seven to ninety-five, or somewhere around there, the heating system wasn't functioning properly that either, because you have pockets of extreme, and then you'd have kids that had to wear their coats to class. So that would have been, we're talking a lot of years, it's not functioning properly.
And we replaced a lot of these ventilators, but now some of the ones that are outgasing the camp are parts. So John Florio was constantly using them as a mold to fix them.
But until we know, because that's what we're doing, you know, and I mean, this is a question, until we know what we're doing with the high school, though, does it make sense to replace the windows? Because there will be certain, you're going to have all those windows.
I wouldn't do anything.
See, I would be...
We're going to continue to replace the ventilators. We'll do nothing with the windows, but that would be a two or three million dollar job.
Yeah, and I thought we should...
No, it would be all amongst the project for reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
So if we could go back to the health and food certification...
I apologize for having to run out. I forgot the motions, so I have to fire them now. As we talked last time, that this is something, that this will give us another ten cents a meal, which at this point, we're recommending that you accept this. We will at a later meeting, either July or August. You can also approve exemptions from this policy, so things like the concession stand during games would not have to follow these regulations.
Or if you had a play going on.
Yeah, so there are things that we can move off of this. The one thing that it will impact is, for example, practices, you know, you can't do it for sort of just, you know, day-to-day events, it has to be for something. But, you know, we're so close now that it really doesn't make sense to leave the money on the table.
We haven't passed reject it.
We reject it every year.
But I will say most states accept it.
Yes, most districts, yes. There are, I, there may be less than ten districts that don't take it.
This affects the T-Birds Nest. After school hours, we're able to hold the T-Birds Nest during the academic day from recess.
This is everything.
After school as well.
Yeah, sometimes. So I just see a... Now, would not, for example, if, and they don't really do it at the T-Birds Nest, if during basketball games, when they set the tables up to sell pizza or whatever, you could still allow that to it.
What about, do we need to exempt fundraising? I don't know if we do cookie dough sales or any of that here.
Well, those are the things we'll have to discuss when we actually bring the list, and then you guys can kind of go through it and decide what you think is something that you may want to stick to and something that you don't.
Well, and I think I appreciate recommendations from you, because I don't really know what, you know, the holidays or something, you know, and I know that some of that is exempted, so that might be a palette.
I'll make a motion to approve pursuant to the section 10-215, cap of the Connecticut General Statutes. The North Grand Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in North Grand public schools and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, will meet said standards during the period of July 1st, 2016, and June 30th, 2017. Second.
Can we call for a local call?
Chairman Delmar?
No.
Vice Chair Warren?
Yes.
Secretary Bonback?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Deborah Pumia?
Yes.
Sarah Perrefield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to certified evaluations under section 10-151, G D, of the Connecticut General Statutes, that on or around June 30th, all evaluations will be complete. The administrative team has been working diligently and getting all of that paperwork done. Obviously, there's many layers now with the evaluation model. In turn, then we sit down and go through the evaluation of the administrative team. So it's a busy month over the next couple of weeks, but they've been working diligently to get that done. And I can add a few remarks.
Speaking of evaluations, we still need your format. So, because we have two years by June 30th.
Will, you have the option to push that out and do that in July if you so assign, or unless you...
Is that okay with you, Scott?
Absolutely.
We've not heard, or not?
We've had no discussion, as of far, we've had no discussion whatsoever.
I mean, I could miss that, but it's never made us.
No, we've had no discussion about it whatsoever.
No. The Connecticut General Statutes call for the superintendent to give the format for the evaluations. He gives us a format that we follow the format.
Okay, so what we've always done is the chair will work with me, we use the K evaluation, and then you would distribute it to the board members.
Right.
And we could push that to July.
That's right.
So if we push it to July, how are we going to be evaluating works?
The board chair will distribute them.
Board chair will get it to you.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to be...
And as long as that's our K, we stop, we push it off into July?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll communicate on getting them from my office and you can see.
Thank you. You need to distribute them and collect them and tally them before the July meeting, so that we can all review them, and then we'll go into executive sessions. Okay.
Would you each of our...
That's our point.
Okay, the authority to hire. In the past, we've had the ability to give permission to my office to hire, and with the administrators, when we do have openings, as you're all aware, we have a music and a tech at opening at this time. I would strongly recommend that we continue to support the motion to allow me to have the authority to hire. The tech acquisition is an area that is a shortage, and we have an interview set up for Tuesday. We have a couple of candidates in the second go-through that we would like to, if we do get a candidate, be able to offer contracts and use it. I know they're also interviewing next week. They have a number of interviews set up that may lose a candidate waiting for October.
I want to approve that. I already agreed to the superintendent to hire certified personnel affecting the date of September 15, 2016, more of the evaluation meeting. A second.
Can I just say this is a standard thing and makes good sense for reasons...
Not standard, I mean, I should have told you. It's almost, it's almost a standard operating procedure.
It just makes good sense.
Well, I think it's important to know, too, that it's not that we're not communicating with Scott, because some of it is, we're updating the process.
And he actually gives us more and more latitude than many in that offers us the opportunity to go into executive session to discuss proposed hires beforehand, and in many places, that is not a standard operation, you know, operating standard.
Right.
Okay, a motion on the floor, anybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question, Harris.
Hi, thank you.
Can committee reports, negotiations, Tom?
Okay, we will be negotiating the contract with teachers next year for the period beginning July of 2017. As far as I know right now, Phil and Ewan Marcy are the negotiation representatives. And we'll start, we have to meet with the town council around October. And unfortunately, our timetable is a little bit not so great, because our arbitration date is usually right around Christmas. And there will typically be a mediation session sometime in December that will be a long evening, sometimes into the wee hours of the morning.
It's pretty close to Christmas. It's pretty close to Christmas. I get my shopping list while I'm sitting there.
So again, I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. Also, our non-certified contracts are coming up next year as well, but they'll be, we won't really start those in earnest until after the first of the year.
Would it be possible to meet with the town council in September, or set up our charter, give us more room?
I don't think so. Problem is, is all statutory working backwards from your budget submission date. So if we go backwards from the referendum, and, you know, the days are basically locked in, we will contact the town manager and, you know, give him the timeframe with which we need to meet.
Get a term representative to serve on the committee.
It's long. It's within thirty days of the conference.
Yeah, it's all for the...
Yeah, it's this.
I mean, it would help the council, too, because they have, in the past, had complaints about us giving them contracts like twenty-four hours before their due.
Were they invited to serve on the committees?
Well, there's, if they... One sub-council member is allowed to serve on the committee. And then there's, and again, this is all statutory. Once the board approves a contract, it's filed with the town clerk. And from the time it's filed with the town clerk, we have thirty days. The council has thirty days to act on it. And basically, the way it works is, the council doesn't have to approve. They can reject it, they can approve it. They can reject it. If they don't act on it, then after thirty days, it becomes plain.
I don't know how you go around doing it. It would be helpful to urge the council to appoint someone to the negotiating committee so that they have their own set of eyes there, because I believe last time, it didn't...
The teachers, the teachers, I guess.
No, teachers, no.
We have sent out the teachers.
Yes, yes, exactly. And then there was a lot of confusion going on, and I think it's helpful if we have a council member there from, you know, at all meetings observing us all along.
We did, we did for the last teacher contract, mayor and board.
Teachers, yes.
Yes, not administrators.
Is it?
Is it?
Okay. How much are your board members?
So we met, was it last week?
Yes.
Last week.
Yeah. And we went through, one of the recommendations from that meeting was...
Well, we went over the exist, the end of the year budget. We went over the procedure for spending, anything that might remain.
Right.
Whether the procedure was, and Scott and Don talked about things that they needed to spend money on, basically, like curriculum, with some technology and software. It sounded very important, and Don had some things to talk about.
Yeah, because we had just, we had just asked that the next budget, whatever had been spent, we just knew that.
Right. We're in the process of getting anything for my chair.
Right.
Were you given instruction of strategic planning, June meeting?
We apologize. Yes. So we presented a school equipment plan that was submitted to the state for a North Grand High School. We are waiting for an explanation from the state as to whether or not we need additional information. The school equipment plan that is written is really a formalized version of the presentation that was given to you during the May subcommittee meeting by Mr. Keith Orwar, who's a principal of our High School. This is just what we submitted to the state in January.
And what's the timeline?
Is there... I sent it at the beginning of the month. I would hope by June 30th, but they don't give us a deadline. At the very least, I would expect to hear before the start of the next school year, but until then, I, they don't really give you...
Okay, they will already have the this year's test floor.
Absolutely.
So this is, I'm guessing we're going to have improvement, I don't think improvement plan, any...
That is our plan, and we actually have to state that in the improvement plan, so we'll see how it all goes with that. Okay. Thank you.
Mentioned, do not have a meeting. Policy, subcommittee recommends policy P3045, exemption from obstruction.
So it is not, and so that's why it's not included in the package. Okay, so it was in the May meeting? Yeah, I saw you looking through it, and I was going to try and flag the... We were trying to consider a lot of the... Sorry, I know that.
Can I make a motion?
Oh, sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P3045, exemption from obstruction, as submitted to the board on May 19, 2016. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aces meeting, from you?
We had our final meeting of the year. The good news is that the state didn't award many building project, projects. They did award the Weeder Hill project phrases, and I believe they're getting a percent reimbursement. We also had a presentation by the Haven foundation, and they were seeking to have Aces invest money with that, but because it's public funds and because there's the risk of losing money, and because it was a 1.25% fee when you lost money or made money, we have the board table that for now, because we were not interested in risking our share of money, even though interest rates are really above that. So we also evaluated the superintendent and adjourned for the summer.
Thank you. The other committee?
Yes, I attended on Monday, and we reviewed a report from Bill Chody stating that the ventilators are complete and running to spec. Ms. Chellinock would confirm that all the work is indeed complete. The balance of the payment was sent to Titan, and a motion was made and passed to accept the project as complete. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the school building project number 099-0052RR, to take it valid, elementary school roof project as complete. Second.
Under discussion, I just asked if the principal also confirmed that everything was working, if that is the reason?
She was there when I know the electrician went over and with John Florio, and obviously, Bill Chody's not here this evening to do the walkthrough, Dr. Lindsay was present with. She's not here, obviously, tonight, and so I can't comment for her. But the good news was that what we thought was a problem with the electrical hookup, the motor, the handle, the capacity, and it was just a matter of reconnecting. So the good news was that we didn't have to... So the good news was that we didn't have to take apart equipment motors and they couldn't handle the voltage. Uh, so it was just a matter of reconnecting. We used a local vendor to do it. Uh, it does a lot of work in this.
And Bill Choody did report that it was, um, running to spec and design, so I would think that would indicate that it was.
So it's working.
Right.
This also would really preclude the board, the town, if there was a warranty issue or something like that.
You can still.
You can still pursue that. This really, frankly, the, the biggest, the, the biggest driving force for this right now is the town can't get their money until, you know, you can't get any final payments until the board accepts the project.
And is it the warranty doesn't take effect the day that they accept the project? Does that have a warranty? And if that's a warranty, though, the project? I did want the warranty, so I'm just gonna ask.
They did a motion.
I did have any. Yeah, and then I discussed it and now we're.
Is that a roll call?
Chairman Del Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'War?
Yes.
Secretary Bumbach?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Debra Correa?
Yes.
Derek Querkle?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna add real quick that this, um, committee is not weak anymore.
That's why I actually thought this motion was coming from. I didn't, what you just fired your shot.
It's just not the committee for me. July.
Um, so she's all ready for that. It could probably, all, um, projects are complete to date and, um, until we start something new, which hopefully we do when we have.
I see.
Not since you did. We cannot lie.
So I don't know, maybe it's a little off. We don't know what to ask.
That's not people, you know, every new board member has to do it somehow or another.
Since Beck isn't here.
It's initiation.
If you're just talking about nations, you can't do it.
I, well, I, I like building that. Beth, maybe Beth.
She's not here, you can not.
Exactly.
Okay. Next, next is a motion to approve the school calendar.
We're actually, you know, we're gonna ask you to table this. Um, I'm, I'm distributing it anyway, um, but, and this actually is, um, also the issue that Rose was speaking to earlier tonight. This, this calendar has on it a, um, the elimination of the professional development day, which was originally August twenty-fourth. It moved the school day back from June seventh to June sixth. Um, it corrects the error that Don made in not making December twenty-third a half on that being a dismissal. Um, and it also suggests, but these are, and then the issue with this is they're not yet confirmed, um, a couple of other early dismissal days for professional development. And, um, once we get those confirmed, so we felt that rather than having you, you know, approve something without those days and then have to come back next month and act on it again, we would wait until we had everything affirmed up. Um, if you want to consider the suggestion to, instead of changing the last day of school from June seventh to June, to June sixth, to remove the student day from somewhere else in the year, you can also do that.
Anyway, again, so we would ask you to, this is handling, favoring this discussion. I think, as you are aware, we're going to a common calendar for our rests. And a lot of that, um, detail goes in when we are gonna have common days for professional development. And I know we're waiting on two confirmation dates right now, so I think having a month to get feedback on that and to weigh in on, we don't have a committee now for calendar, so we're basically going on our best and our ability to, you know, to work with, with these members.
But, but can you also, um, I, I don't know, I sort of think that maybe look at the federal vacation and make that, you know, a longer.
I'd like to know what the purpose is.
I'm wondering, adding it to a vacation week.
Yeah, I don't, I understand.
They only have two days.
What, what is the reason we wanted not take it off the end of the school year?
I, well, there, there isn't, I haven't earned rationale for it. I, I don't, I don't know. It was not my recommendation. Uh, I will speak to the number of continuous days that we have in the classroom. The administrators I know will echo, um, the, the flow of instruction. When we do have full weeks to chop weeks up, it, it's not a recommendation that, that I would make. When we make the decision, we just look at the end of the day and, and back it up one day because if we can interrupt the PDAs that are, that we're trying to accommodate with additional half days. When you have two additional half days, you're chopping a whole week.
Right.
And we, we wanna wait a month so we know, so we're not making a recommendation by coming back to changing it again and then having to reset it to the calendar.
Would you revert to assume there would be some cost savings, but only from the secretary's standpoint by attaching it to a vacation because the twelve-month secretaries are not paid for break days unless they're holidays.
And you couldn't save on, because I guess because it's only a short vacation in February, you can't really save on eating. We just, we just took a lot of grief. It, it, you, you weren't part of it. There was a lot of pushback to keep it a short week yet over February when we were, when we were still going with a long week, there was a lot of, there's snow days, there's this, there's that. The only other thing that I thought of besides adding it on to an already weekly on vacation, only thing I thought of was adding it on to October eleventh, since we're off for Columbus Day anyways, and they get a long weekend.
So question, can you? I, and again, I only know how I work in my district. Can you explain to me what adding it to a vacation per twelve-month secretary does?
What we, our.
Maybe I'm having a right to.
No, no, and, and yours, your district may very well be different. What our, our twelve-month secretaries are actually paid a variable number of days depending on, depending on the school year and the calendar. So for example, when we had a full February break, during that week, they would get paid one day, President's Day is a holiday, the other four days, they were not paid for. So their work year, you know, over the past few years, depending on whether there's, I asked people, I've been here twenty, so I'm like.
Just a few.
Um, they, it varies between two hundred and forty-eight days and two hundred and fifty-three days, depending on what the calendar actually looks like. And so as I said, if, you know, if you added it to February break, our, our pay convention would be that they would, if you had a three-day February break, they would get paid for the holiday, they would not get paid for the other two days. So there would be some cost savings, but only for that, and it doesn't affect the ten-month secretaries.
And so it's only for the twelve-month.
So only the twelve-month.
I was thinking more along the lines of, um, trying to give the teachers something instead of the ones losing the chance. So I was thinking the teacher might like, you know, a little longer vacation or something like that.
But I, I would be against it from an instructional standpoint because I think that any kind, anytime you have a long, I teach early, but I have my kids home during those breaks. Um, anytime that you have extended time out of the classroom, there is some recouping that needs to happen. And so I was, I was against the February vacation, even having the February vacation. Um, I certainly would want to see the December vacation even longer. Yeah, now, now I don't, now I'm on it. Because it's actually, the December vacation, the way the holidays fall this year, it's significant. And then you have your April vacation. I would rather see it stay with no.
What, what about the twenty-third then?
Twenty-third one.
Well, it's a half day. If it became a day, you know, became a school, people would be happy, it wouldn't disrupt. There's not much education that goes on December twenty-third anyway, I'm telling you this. From, as a former teacher, I'm telling you, there, there is not much that goes on education. I mean.
So I do put it on a half day on the twenty-second.
No, I said, but she's saying instead, instead of taking, instead of taking a full day on instruction, take a half day of instruction. What does that do?
Well, I, I guess that gets a little bit stickier because I think the teachers union will have to agree to that because their, their contract has a early dismissal prior to Christmas break.
So you have the half day on Thursday.
So then you probably move in the half day to the twenty-second now until.
Okay, so. Okay, it was just a thought, always remembering.
Some of you, now you're calling, calling ridiculous, but I know what you're saying. You take a day away at the end or you take a day away attached to a vacation that you're not getting paid for those days anyways, except maybe one or two of them. What difference does it make? I mean, bro.
Right now, right now, there, it, let's, let's just say for the sake of argument, you decided to make it the Wednesday of February break. And you said, okay, the, the kids aren't gonna go to school that Wednesday. Right now, the way the calendar is, the kids are in school and therefore the twelve-month secretaries are all working. If you make that a break, then they're not working because they don't work breaks and they wouldn't get paid for that day because it's not holiday.
But they're not getting paid. What she's saying is.
But they're not.
They move it on six.
But, but they're twelve-month secretaries that day.
They already get full vacations off on the baby.
This could be something that's very unique to our district, you know, the way this, the way the pay calendar is, is generated for the twelve-month secretaries, you know, it might be something that's not common, that, that's different in Maryland.
Which is how, this, this is how, this is how I do. I think the calendar needs to, um, we need to make decisions based on instruction, instruction time first, then reference of, of other things. And then I, I'm against chopping a month off.
Coming in for two days is, you know, that's the only thing, I just can't see.
Right. And even if you did the Friday before, now we're looking at a four-day week and then a three-day week.
And I know, I'm just not getting more calories. Teachers.
I think, I think it's important when, you know, when you talk about two fewer days and moving contractually next year for the teachers, a hundred and forty teachers are making more next year with two fewer days. Thirty teachers at the top are still increasing their pay, it just, it's significant in the last, and the average is between two and five percent for a hundred and forty of the teachers. So they are making a higher wage next year, they're just not working those two days.
They were counting fine until they did, so.
I must, again, I, I understand. The good news is, we're not asking you to vote on this until next month.
Or honestly, I'm changing if all the discussions will have, and one of them.
The good news is, the good news is, we're not gonna solve this right here tonight, so.
One question I did.
Right now, a motion to table this until the next meeting.
But I wanted to make one more comment. Um, so if we, no, I'm gonna do that. If we vote, if we vote on this next month, this goes out, and.
We want to do one shot.
Okay, all right. I know that was a priority, I just don't wanna delay too long. Do you may proceed?
Well, we don't motion to table the calendar approval discussion until next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries. We don't need the motion to vote in executive session. Uh, is there anything for the, for the board?
I have something.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if everyone read the, the North Brentford patch, but they had a little article where they ranked North Brentford in one of the top hundreds of school districts in the state, not only about a hundred and twenty K twelve school district, districts in the state, but we're in the top hundreds and I don't get it. And I found, um, that they base the rankings on graduation rates, AP enrollment, SAT, ACT scores and quality of colleges that the students were considered for. And I'm very happy to say that North Brentford ranked fifty-third. They were ahead of Clinton, which is in our DUR, Clinton was ranked ninety-second. They were ahead of Westbrook, which is in our DUR, which was ranked, um, eighty-first. And they were ahead of North Haven, which is not in our DUR, but.
She likes.
I like to track. Naturally, they were ahead of North, which is fifty-seven. So I, I was very happy to see that because sometimes they, they had these rankings and we have not been that far up in ranking.
I liked, I liked it that girl. And we had six students vote before the council last week and our top three students, um, were there and our number one student was obviously one of Boston College, was accepted at Northeast, and the other two were going to UConn, to the honors program. And it, you know, when you look at the top of the scale, we're looking at going to a state school in the honors program for fifty percent of the price of going to a, a league private school. Our students are making good decisions. Our fifty-eighth ranked student was accepted at Quinney Catholic University. And I always look at what I call the tweakers, the top ten percent, bottom ten percent, that would be a good idea where they're going to go. I'm looking at that seventy to seventy-five percent in the middle and students that might possibly not get the recognition to have our fiftieth percentile of students getting into Quinney Catholic. We had six or eight students going to Quinney Catholic. It's, it's these volumes and, um, it's because of the hard work, the increase in the advanced placement, the coursework that's being offered, and our students being challenged, and it raises the bar for people. So, you know, I'm, I'm proud of that and, and we'll continue to work hard. Uh, we, the DUR, because it was released, we sent that information out. Waterford is now in our DUR as well. It, it's really interesting when you look at all of the school districts in our DUR that have a K twelve district, they all have new high schools. They all have renovated, new teaching environments. And, you know, I can't say it enough that, you know, our staff works in a fifty-year-old building with, at one time, with ceilings dripping and, and buckets everywhere. And when you stand before the council last week and you look around the room and I recognized, you know, Franklin Rolle's daughter, who just finished her, uh, or is finishing her PhD in physical therapy. And looking at other members of the council, whose children went to the North Brentford schools and are thriving right now, and your children who have gone through the system and are thriving right now, uh, it, it's, it's crudos to all. And, um, you know, I think we'll get that building built. I don't have a timeline, but if we steer the course and we keep our committee together and those people will get in charge.
Please don't add, we can all back on. So I, I just have a question, I don't know if it falls under the board, but it's the, the way we vote for the, the meetings. And I don't, I, I don't know Robert's rules, but when Phil asks if we, yeah or no, you're not voting at that point. Correct?
Yeah, I know.
But how are you voting because you don't, you don't vote? Do you know the time? So we're not, so when, when you say.
Well, well.
You say all in favor?
All in favor, we say yes, you're not voting.
But I think we have to look at Robert's rules because I think some, in some cases, chairman do not vote unless they're breaking the time. So we would have to.
That's true.
We would, yeah, so in that case, in that case, well.
We're just, we are not actually using Robert's rules right now. That was a, um, it's a policy related to, um, now, I can work it till the next week.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah.
Right, but it's for the tiebreaker as chair.
Yeah, well, you can do it all in favors, you've been doing it all in favors and then you wanted to vote no, so you decided blue side will call on this one.
Well, it, it wasn't even on, on that one, but it was for any previous meeting minutes, I think we've been capturing them all as it's been unanimous and I apologize, but I didn't realize it until today.
But it, but it is unanimous unless someone goes pink out or they say abstain, like Debbie wasn't.
But I guess my question, come on. I guess my question is, when, when you're taking the vote, does that mean that you're voting yes?
He's voting.
That's serious.
Well, see, in this problem, my question would be that way.
Okay, so, but when you say all in favor, we say yes, and you say any, I can't remember the wording right now, would you say no at that point?
Yes.
Okay, but you don't say yes, that's my, I guess it's from, I'm just getting confused.
I'm not sure if he asked you, I think we need to look at the bylaws and see, because in many cases, whether it's Robert, Robert's rules or not, the chairman doesn't vote unless it's a tie.
But that has to be a consistent practice. It can't be, um, what we choose to vote on and not vote on. And I just write, if you remember when we, when Phil first became chair, I questioned who decided to change the law in favor as opposed to roll call. And I like the fact that it doesn't take too long and kind of quicker pace, but I questioned it because there is, you are very specific and noted how we vote when you do roll call and that's why I questioned.
I, I take it it was when we were doing policy and we had a spread of twenty-five policies.
Right, yeah. So try to log them together.
We did it in that fashion. We did it in that fashion. I think if I remember.
No, as soon as Phil became chair, he changed it and I questioned it and.
But I. Yeah, no, 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 but previously when we did have a whole, whole slew of policies, a few times we did do all in favors. Well, we talked about first. We said, does anybody mind if we do all in favors?
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's, he's.
How to change our, see if she works.
Yeah, I, I mean, Phil did, did that on his own as his first act as chairman. Um, and I, I recall then questioning it, but personally, I like it that it's expedient. I, I do think, you know, if, if we look at the rules, the bylaws and all, and Phil needs to say, all right, with everyone else, it will be.
Yeah, and that, that was just my question. Only because I, I didn't, I realized today and I was, you know, I, I, I loved it. I was like, oh, wait, Phil isn't.
But, but you see, in my role, he is voting, he says no or I abstain.
That's how I vote.
You know, if I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna say no, whether, you know, you're not gonna sneak by without.
Right, no.
And then if there's any question, you can always pull for a roll call. If you, you know, if, if you have a mixed reception.
Okay.
I, we can, I have the rules. I think they're posted online. You can get those, those.
Shouldn't you just.
On the floor. I wish that, yeah.
Yeah, we do a motion to a joint.
I do.
Oh, we can publish comments in the history.
I don't know.
I was privileged the past two weeks to, to go through a number of, of different gatherings of the students between the promotion from NBIS and the graduation from our high school. And I have to tell you how impressed I was with those kids. Every single student at NBIS, as they came across the stage or received a diploma, said thank you, good firm handshake, looked you in the eye. They did a fabulous job. And the high school kids, I mean, I love that bunch. They're a great bunch of kids and, uh, very nicely done. Very, very, their decorum was good, you know, they, they didn't go crazy, you know, during the, during the graduation or anything. And, uh, really was a good, good job. Thank you. I'd like to thank the staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, they were, they were very well. Yes. You could tell, especially the, the middle school kids, the high school kids are more independent, but at the middle school they had been very well rehearsed. They knew the expectations and it was just a very well-run, you're both graduating. And the dress, the dress this year for the intermediate school, the times. Was, even more so the girls, much better than in past years. Much better than past years.
Do we have any comments from visitors? Any from press? All right. The next regular board of education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 21st, 2016. That's still what's the regular time?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you know, Karen, second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.